Good evening. Before we start the meeting, first of all, our apologies to the inhuman delay for the meeting and the fact that this has been so lengthy. So thank you for your patience. The right of way coming forward, speaking of the amateurs, the board of school directors on Wednesday, July 1st, is now called order. Flag two, please, rise.
I'd like to take a brief to the flag of the amateur state of America. It's a three-ball team, which is standing on the ground. It's a position of liberty, which is a small.
If you could repeat the annual conference, I just heard it come over in silence. We want to say, well, as you know, this party, Tyler Wild, um, his student services are probably still particularly prominent, Tyler and his students. Thank you. This meeting is recorded for district purposes. It is a meeting for the state court or any of the state courts on the district's website without the express permission of any participating parties. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Enid.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mrs. Carter.
Here.
Mrs. Keighley.
Here.
Mr. Magglio.
Here.
Mr. Metz.
Here.
Miss Haye. Miss Young. Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. Sunshine Law, please.
The board of school directors have the executive section in open and paid a light meeting for us to discuss personnel matters, matters subject to attorney-client privilege, and other common anti-tying.
Thank you. Do we have any more suns this evening?
No, there's one.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept the correct minutes of the June tour being discussed by the meeting. June tour, not moving, June 15th, fourth of June. Thank you. Mrs. Keighley, number seven.
I'm sure.
Thank you. Is there any other call in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? I have a motion to accept the trigger for work dated, uh, six years, because we don't have no trigger for work until the audience board meeting?
June. Have a try.
Okay.
We will vote on.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing to... Moving forth to the amendment, and then the agenda, the full agenda?
My question, I have two. Another personnel meeting, ID number thirty, um, subsection number seven, voice call. He is my agent, he is a caring steward assistant, beverage amount one thousand fifty dollars. And I also need, uh, ID number thirty-four, under personnel. And it is, uh, under boys, of course, he has a bulk beverage, um, it's a higher wine use, and beverage can slide in at six thousand dollar, subject to standard conditions and that question.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Thank you, Mrs. Paul, seven.
Seven, seven.
Thank you, Mr. Metz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any votes? Thank you. Moving forth, recognition for representation. Boy volleyball recognition, two thousand twenty-one season. The amateur school district would like to publicly recognize the amateur boy volleyball team. The board of school directors and superintendent are extremely proud of the accomplishments of the team and her coaches. We would like to take the time to recognize the team, student athletes, and their coaches who have worked so hard on their accomplishments. Two thousand twenty-one boy volleyball team, overall record, overall record of eleven and four. Won seven of the WPIAL, nine plays in the state PIA play. Individual student athletes, and the boys would please come forward so we can get a picture. All section teams. First team, Reed Fisher and Robert Tral. Second team? Second team, Josh Owen, Jake Hitoa, and Officer Lingham. All video team, first team, Reed Fisher and Robert Tral. Third team, Josh Owen. Head coach, Mr. Green, twenty years of coaching, sir. Mr. Green has been coaching amateurs for the past twenty years. Mr. Green started in two thousand nine, had a fifteen coach for the boy volleyball, and became the head coach for boy volleyball in two thousand eleven. Mr. Green has led the team to sixty million championships during his time as the head coach. In the past twenty years, running boy volleyball in two thousand twenty, the boy volleyball won one hundred and fifteen championship championships, twenty million world championships with ten million championships, sixteen PIA playoff tournaments, one PIA state championship, and eight additional top three championships. Please join me in congratulating the volleyball team for creating the coaches' top eleven accomplishments. All the teachers and students present, who can get a picture, please? Just for a little bit of information, well, Mr. Time, can you get a picture?
Yep.
I've known Mr. Green since we were kids, uh, we went all through school together. Um, and I can tell you he's an excellent student, and he's been a wonderful teacher, and such a terrific example for our boys. So we are very, very lucky and privileged to have someone like him serving in our district. Can we have a round of applause for the team?
Thanks, Jerry.
Moving forth to public comment, regarding agenda ID home. At this time, Mr. President may come forward to comment on agenda ID home. Each person must take their personal last name and address prior to speaking. Each resident will be allowed three minutes and speak only once. This carried for public comment, priorities obtained, and reported, will be limited to the one half hour. Although not required, we're going to examine who has direct questions or concerns, we do so after the resident comments question, or if it includes you in the committee. There will still be an opportunity for residents to comment on any events related to the amateur school district on your own, if you're ready at the end of the meeting. Any comments on the agenda?
Is it in the agenda?
I believe it is. It is part of the same team of this school, I believe.
Do you have any respect for this department or any of the, which section of boys or academics related to?
Well... It has everything to do with middle school. So ninety-eight flights in a year prior to COVID, and isn't that harder?
It does not matter, because it goes on, you're second off the train, I think that's inappropriate.
Okay? That's perfectly fine, I think. I, I just want to make it clear that that was part of my why we're actually here, okay? Perfect.
Hi, I'm in Atlantic, two sixteen, Ridge Bay, July, making PPA, one five oh five. And this is in regards to, I believe, what, if you scroll back to the sensitive health and safety, safety agenda. Um, down, I'm sorry, where your... If you scroll to first page? No, where I have listed all the sensitive, um...
Oh, so then the publication, okay. So those are the permitted reasons under the sunshine law for the board to hold this executive session, um, it could be any one of the people identified too. So this portion is just informational, so again, there's a lot of action, I understand, as we have a late two, so they will take that.
Other, every...
So again, we do have...
Stay with me. Hold it for me. All right. All right. Moving forth to the committee reports, education and technology, Mrs. Meganoff?
Thank you, Mrs. President. I have two, and Dr. Haye responding to under education and technology.
We're at second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Perfect. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Perfect.
Yes.
Mrs. Keighley.
Yes.
Mrs. Magglio.
Yes.
Mr. Metz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
No should hear.
Thank you. My name is Andrew. Mrs. Meganoff, would you take that place instead of the neighbor, Peter, this evening?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you for the adoption, still afraid of any response, but I am in my next touch with you.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Metz. Roll call, please.
Mr. Enid. Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Perfect.
Yes.
Mrs. Keighley.
Yes.
Mrs. Magglio.
Yes.
Mr. Metz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
No should hear.
Thank you. Building and ground.
Mrs. Keighley, would you mind taking this one, please?
Uh, to the adoption, I have the one.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Metz. Roll call, please.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Perfect.
Yes.
Mrs. Keighley.
Yes.
Mrs. Magglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
No should hear.
Athletic, Mr. Campbell?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Public relations, Mr. Metz?
No.
Thank you. Steering rules, Mrs. Keighley?
That's my voting rights.
Thank you, legislative, uh, Miss Young, nobody has to be here with her voting rights. Salary, criminal relations, Mrs. Curtis?
I'm looking for adoption by this group, as per sentence.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mrs. Meganoff. Roll call, please.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Perfect.
Yes.
Mrs. Keighley.
Yes.
Mrs. Magglio.
Yes.
Mr. Metz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
No should hear.
Thank you. Personnel, Mrs. Keighley, would you take this evening?
Yeah, let's go to the adoption, I have one, we started four, that's a minute.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mrs. Curtis. Roll call, please.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Perfect.
Yes.
Mrs. Keighley.
Yes.
Mrs. Magglio.
Yes.
Mr. Metz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes. Thank you. Is the list of the reporter?
Just to remind you, I know it's having a material change under our, under our practices, um, but I will work with the court secretary, Dr. Vasco, and, uh, some monitoring to, uh, the posting of the agenda, and then afterward, we'll work together, and then we each bring that into our practices. That goes with amendment of the vote back, law is third, so it will be fairly regarded somewhere in the, and I am aware of the approach.
Thank you. Is there a technical report?
Yes, on the agenda, it was a very, I just like the, the garage, the tumor, the elementary, the elementary station, as the school life process, the areas, the system, they were, they were to the five grade, both of them, I understand, and, um, totally eleven thousand five hundred, uh, so, very excited about that, I would be, that, that the, the street, the, the, excited to see the work, you know, with, 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 with the nation, also congratulate the volleyball team and all personnel, it's, we're hard religiously about summer, preparing for the society.
Thank you. Olden divinity, if it is now time for olden divinity, any district president who desires to comment on any business relevant to the amateur school district should now come forward. Each person must take their personal last name and address prior to speaking. Each person will be allowed free residence, and can speak only once.
Sherry, you need to submit me, and my husband also will care for me, my daughter is back, and, you know, I believe all the other mother, who we are, I'm correct. So, to the parents, and that's my thing right now. Let me tell you, I have. Six eleven, twenty twenty-one. My daughter got away. At the fifteen AM, okay? Seven fifteen to seven twenty AM, she got to the school, she got off, man sixty. Her friend picked her up, went straight to the office, talked to Mr. Turp, I believe I saw him, told him that she thinks she is going to be a junkie. When I didn't, as you know, I got a call. Seven fifty, seven AM, I called the school, I said, I am concerned it has been brought to my attention that a jumping of my daughter is going to happen that day. Please give something, okay? Eight o'clock AM, and all the babies were submitted to the school, uh, school board, as well as the staff in the building. So, she texted me and said, Mom, I'm scared. Okay. All right, Ashley, where's Mr. Turp? He said he's going to be there, okay? I'll pick you up. No, Mom, it's last day of school, I would like to stay, say goodbye to my teachers, say goodbye to Ms. Michelle, how is her, did I pronounce her right? Okay, fine. I said just keep texting me. Okay, Mom. Nine oh four AM, I got a call from the school nurse. Oh, I'm sorry, eight fifty five, maybe nine o'clock, she texted, Mom, I got a junkie. What? Nine oh five, I got a call from the nurse, Mrs. McFady, Ashley is in, um, is here with me, she heard her name, okay? I'm here. I work two and a half hours. I'm here. I got it. Mr. McCallie walked outside, I was there for probably fifteen minutes, waiting for what, I don't know, I was outside. He guys outside, he said, Mrs. McFady. I said, what the hell happened? You had, I, he gave you the time frame, I gave you all gym, she told you? What, what happened? Mrs. McFady here, what is that, things like, or discussion? And I said, are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? So regardless of whether she followed the rule, she would still face this penalty, correct? Because she was there, she was scared, I'm assuming she followed her, she was scared, and then she started freaking out, Mom, I'm scared, Mr. Turp. In fact, the conversation, she told me, Mr. Turp told her, Ashley, you haven't been on this before, you will be just fine. Thank you, I mean...
We are worried, I know.
You, you gotta, she came from the economy and elementary school, that's the letter, no problem, love the prison. We won't get the economy, and our name, and other parents' name, and I would say, does she remember all the parents' names? I guess she does. Very grateful for that, she goes, middle school, all now breakers. Sure, she's a team manager, I understand that, I don't expect her to be perfect, I don't want her to be perfect, uh, we are the parent, we can't trust you, we didn't. Any problems in school, nothing, go for it, anything, neighbors, relatives?
We did, missed the that, I know, but it, uh, so it's for her.
If you like, you know, the last three factors, you wrap up what you want, we take the, that is a time called a comment, um, so I, is it a time for you?
I didn't know, there is, I didn't have to know, but, so we hit true, that prior to government, there was ninety-eight, eighty, hundred twenty, hundred twenty, eighty-five, like I told you, hundred plus forty-eight, and that's just all economy police department out there. And, so for a time in Pasquale, the last conversation we had, we didn't have all the information yet, this is day thirty-one.
Okay, wait a second, I'm sorry, I forgot to, did the timeline, but I did want to make it clear that my scope of senior residents, so I, and I refer to you to Dr. Pasquale, but, uh...
I want the suspension revoked, because I can't get up to needed in school, I can't get her to a Catholic school. So now, I enroll her to PA cyber, because that's all the options that I have. So, as a parent is here, what options do we have? What options do we have? If our kids, I put them back in there, there's five girls, and you guys know that, I sent you all those photos, pictures, they're gonna kill her.
And I mean, you know, they're, that's the reason.
I understand that, but I didn't have any here.
But that's given the confidential...
I understand that, but this is actually my crime, what I'm saying is that...
But the first time is over. We appreciate the comments, I think to be clear in terms of the record and for the public, that there have been numerous communications, numerous offers to provide safety support, to investigate bullying, this is taken very seriously.
No, you didn't say, oh, seriously, what you want in it?
And I'm, I'm sure you don't want people to, 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 and we don't want to see...
However, however, actually, we're giving this whole district, so...
But we will, even if you leave, you still take that person seriously, and there will be all that.
I hope so, because there was, there was a kid, there actually was...
But that is fashion, is that the discipline goes for fighting, when this is not mitigated, a lot of life changes when the, when the administration will be, not that presented that it was appropriate, and then the people, and it was appropriate, and that it consisted with others who have been in a similar situation.
Right, this is my daughter, my daughter.
And I understand that as a mother, and as a person, that you don't like the outcome, but it was fair, appropriate, and just, we are sorry that you are going to integrate the school, um, we will, we, we, we are prepared to follow our safety. Our conversation, I believe, is over, not for agreeing with public comment and persons.
I was prepared to dust, when the other girl admitted that she moved apart to punch. So my daughter says to stand there, you got punching back?
Even the teachers are punching back, correct?
Yes or no?
I only extend to you a three-minute comment period, please provide your comments when you are finished, you may get down, that is our practice, and district authorities provide any additional information, they not ready to read them.
The word they got to agree, they have a, this is acceptable, let's leave it. We have to be, we have to, but we should...
We can't get hurt anywhere by PA cyber, we're stopped.
A number of meetings have been lost, we have much more work underway to have this conversation.
But it's forty-one days now, I mean, we only have a couple weeks left to figure out what it is.
I know that it has to be accurate, but to me, they do not understand that, if these have been made before, if I, if I, if I, or others, then we know that that often involves you, and we are, we are, willing, and able, and in light of those interactions, but this is a public meeting, it's not a place where your decisions can be resolved.
We've never got any punches.
I mean, it's over the time.
Did you reach out early to Mrs. Mueller, her appointment, when I sent you the information?
Mueller.
And, uh, his secretary, that's his secretary, did you, did you reach out?
Yeah, I sent it to me, for Jan.
I, I sent it to your, your husband's number as well, I, I texted him.
The principal called us today that he's not retracting the suspension, again, like what I said, our daughter's stuff.
I asked you, when you were at the city, I heard, I said, uh...
I don't deserve, absolutely, I do not.
I'm like, it's not a war matter.
That's the information, I'm, I'm following the appointment, following the...
Sir, I've suggested the route to go, to both you and your wife, I talked to both me several times, what's through Dr. Pasquale?
And this is not a war matter, it's not a, the board has a decision-making power under the law, if a great person to talk to is the administration, ultimately the top, that is Dr. Pasquale, you are encouraged to present him, set up that meeting, he is the person to speak to. That is not, if we...
We had, I had one conversation with him, all right?
As I said, I spoke to both of the parents.
No, you didn't, you spoke to me.
I spoke to both of the parents, and I indicated to both of you that I would not be sharing anything in regards to speaking to your child, or any other child in the public that, but I just...
Yeah, we're stopped, is that what you're saying?
I did speak to both of you.
We're stopped. Oh my God.
So I spoke to you, and you, and to your other people, nobody has ever said anything about me.
Sorry, I apologize, which is a secret, we are done, we are done.
So when you want to have a...
You need to contact the information I gave you, contact Dr. Pasquale, so...
We waited enough.
Forty-one days.
That is forty, and that's the end.
I'm stopping, we, we, it's, uh...
You need to contact the...
I guess, just keep using the economy police department to stop the fights in that school, I guess, that would be, yeah.
Is there anybody else working on my Emily, you got them?
Carl?
You need to make my time with the office, sir, I can't, I don't have anybody scheduled with my... I want to give recommendations to you, and give you the advice that we've been giving you, sir. I'm glad I'm not...
You think she is a very...
Correct.
On the contact?
Yeah.
So after this, I mean, very time, you don't have to, so...
Sir, I told you this was a phone, I'm not letting you go, I'm, I'm a woman, and I work, and I have something to say, sitting there for all these people, I was not to recite you on, I said, you got me first, sit down, and I said, I'm glad I meet you, but, sir, I'm, you said, I'm, I'm gonna make her sit down, I prefer to go to Pasquale, and that's what we need to do, so, that's where we are. It doesn't matter, who said what, that's the advice we're giving you, sir, and we're happy, we're getting to people.
Why can't the public know what's going on, so, why is this...
We can't talk about students going again, right?
We don't talk about any particular students in public court, those have proper rights to be on the board, we do talk about those students, whether that's a minor or not, that doesn't affect you at the time, but this board, not a single person here, or the administration, had a legal right to do so, which is why this isn't a great case for us to have a dial, and claim your seat comments about public matters.
The public matters, the public's own, right? Tell them, the public...
We appreciate that, sir, I tell you, I'm, I got that, you again. Your time is over, your options have been given to you in a number of ways, be prepared to choose. Your option is definitely in the A to a number of ways, be required to.
Emily.
Good evening, take two, on the, not in two sixteen Ridgeway Drive. My, um, first thing, would be to ask a question, if the health and safety plan for the district for the whole while of this next school year has been developed, or is in process, right now?
So. What do you want me to speak? So, I'm gonna, your question is about how will we begin the, the new year, South Dakota.
Yes, and just believe you to get to the point, the masks you require.
So, what's in our safety, and the committee beginning, we have a long, um, was, that, we stated that as far as masks goes, if there's any other state guidelines we follow, other than that, we have a recommendation of whatever, whatever agencies might imply, we share those recommendations with the board, and the board will make a decision, and that being, that being, that's the time of, of distributing the information as of A that I forget, it's, if the school is harmed, which is, um, there would be a requirement at some level, not a part of, 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 I believe that, of course, that we have to wear masks with us. Other than that, I'm not very, any other mask rules, there's just recommendations, and that, asking for, that, you should look at any on June twenty-sixth, or eighteenth, or eleventh, sorry. That we know of, or have, or, that being said, one, it's welcome to wear.
Fantastic, I was checking from the rooftop, but we got that message through email, that that mandate was lifted, and, you know, I'm here tonight to just advocate for my children, really, all children, that the hope is that it would be left up to each language choice on, to send their child with her without a mask, um, I know what has been developed since June twenty-sixth, and what the CDC is recommending, and they're, they have a few theatrics, and I'm frozen up to red flags. I would just ask, is to continue to develop what I planned, just as a teacher, when I come to a meeting, I have to present data that shows if I want to make a change to a child's program, if I want to have support, or remove support, I have to do it through data, data collection, and evidence-based practices. And I'm asking, if we do and move forward in the same way, with our health and safety plan, in regards to particularly the masks, as I have yet to find real data that shows it's beneficial for our children, but rather that it's actually harmful for our children, and I know I'm getting close to time, and would always be happy to share what I find, that is real scientific evidence that supports that these are potential, that are harmful for our children. So just moving forward, hoping to just start another school year, to see one another's faces, for our young children in particular, to see one another's faces, and not to feel afraid of each other, is my hope, and please, care, calm, community member, I'm happy to help in any way with that, and I also really want to say, how grateful I am for last school year. We know, I'm grateful for the decisions you have to make, and everything that you consider, when you're doing all this for our children, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fisher, just to reiterate that one more time, right now, as it takes, that, you know, our, our, see, when it's, it's the Thursday, the mandate comes down, the committee is, all. Other than that, this, the board changes its direction, which is, so, we can, uh, planning, really, so, we have to, children, that the parents do. So, while I'm just a little, our intention is to best, and possible, and we'll do socialists, although, we realize that's a, and that being, and I'm always being off, we will be, our, our best.
Thank you.
And that's kind of where we're at, obviously, it's a change, and it's a change from, from both of us, working, obviously, to make that decision, but for who is president, at this point, I don't think, ready, any, any changes, at this point, less, it's down on a higher level, so, we're to change, obviously, you have meetings, and obviously, you, you as a board, make that decision, basically, with recommendations, but, and this is, that's, I don't want to speak to you, that's all.
And I, I think, uh, Dr. Vassell, and I would just, I know, it's, uh, when you come to me, and, and, you know, you probably see me most of the time at my mask on, and I just would like to clarify, everybody does know, I have a child that's on, uh, her changed mind, so, um, you know, my decision not to be raised, not affected by, you know, everyone, the victim, but I want you to understand, but, you know, I, um, so. Thank you, anybody else? No. All right, I want to thank you all for attending, before we adjourn, and I apologize for the length of the meeting, and I'm sorry that it's coming off. And thank you for coming in, you, you have some time, yes?
Hello, my name is Stu, uh, hi, I'm a, I'm a, I am jumping in here, completely out of plan, um, but that issue that just happened, a minute ago, the family just left, I have no idea what happened, besides what was shared, I have some concerns now. Um, I have a secondary fifth grader thinking about future, or needs to build school here, and it was ninety-eight, like I said, here, on average, it's so scary to me, um, makes me think, man, do I need to be looking at that out of options, and that's not even what I really might have to do, I want to be able to know that I'm going to be sending my child to school with me. And the fact that she shared, that she notified administration prior to that fight, and nothing, according to her, was done, I would just really like to see verification of me, what was that that happened before the fight, rather than just a disappointment after, what can I afford to, what's they can, you know, can I afford to for my children? I have a great daughter that attended sixth grade this year, and being on the board after all the fights, and all this, I ask her every day, because I'm wanting to draw her up, she never seen one fight, she never heard of another fight, at sixth grade, so, I'm just telling you from my personal experience, that's what I experienced in middle school.
I have also had a child that's gone to the middle school, and had, and had a theory, I wish she could say, can I tell you, there, there have not been fights, of there, of course not, you know, I can't tell you that.